I'd like to call this December 9th, regular council meeting into order in our last council meeting of the year. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? Let's recall those who passed away this month and through the course of the year. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Sabatini.
Here.
Mr. Pezza.
Yeah, here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Trinell.
Here.
Mr. Punske.
Here.
Mr. D Giuseppe.
Here.
Okay, this time, and like councils before me, there was always a festive way to end our year, and we've been blessed over the last few years to have Rosemary Mignoni-Studzky come in and do a couple Christmas carols with our council. So at this time, I'd like to acknowledge Rosemary Mignoni-Studzky.
Thanks for the invitation once again this evening.
Want this?
No, thank you.
Okay.
The burrow hole is so beautiful that I would like to start with Decta Halls, and I hope you'll join with me in singing. (Singing) Decta Halls with bells of holly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. 'Tis the season to be jolly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Don't we now our gay apparel, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Throw the ancient yuletide carol, fa la la la, la 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 la. See the blazing yule before us, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Strike the harp and join the chorus, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Follow me in merry measure, fa la la la, la 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 la. Swallow down a yuletide treasure, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Now, as we know, one of the biggest things that happened in Bristol was the tree lighting ceremony right after Thanksgiving, and that beautiful, beautiful tree, and the beautifully decorated tree by our Bristol crew. And I see they're all here this evening. So thank you for that beautiful tree and all your good luck. And of course, we also had a wonderful gentleman come to visit us that day, and his name was Santa Claus. So, "You better not, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why, Santa Claus is coming to town. He's making a wish, he's checking it twice, gonna find out who's naughty and nice, Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're asleep, he knows if you've been bad or good, so be good for goodness' sake. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why, Santa Claus is coming to town." And we know we've had some snow, and more is on the way. Again, we're going to depend on that borough crew to get us through. (Singing) Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh, o'er the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells on pop-tails ring, making spirits bright, what fun it is to ride and sing a singing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Fanny Bright was seated by my side. The horse was lean and lank, misfortune seemed his lot. We ran into a drifted bank, and there we got upshot. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Now, we know that the other reason why we have as much fun as we have at Christmas time is there's a serious side. It is the reason that Jesus is born. And so, one of the most famous heard carol of all time, translated throughout the world, is Silent Night, Holy Night. So could you join us, please? (Singing) Silent night, holy night, all is calm, all is bright. Brown young virgin mother and child, holy infant so tender and mild. Sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly peace. Silent night, holy night, shepherds quake at the sight. Glorious dreams from heaven afar, heavenly host sings hallelujah. Christ the Savior is born, Christ the Savior is born. Silent night, holy night, Son of God, love's pure light. Radiant beams from thy holy face, with the dawn of redeeming grace. Jesus Lord, let thy fur- Jesus Lord, let thy fur- Now, one of the songs we've had the most fun with the past few years is Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, because we have a soloist amid our council chamber, and we hope he'll play it again this year. (Singing) There was dasher and dancer and prancer and vixen, comet and cupid and doner and blitzen. But do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer.
Reindeer.
Had a very shiny nose.
Shiny nose.
And if you ever saw it.
Saw it.
You would even say it glows. All of the other reindeer.
Reindeers.
Used to laugh and call him names.
All the names.
They never led for Rudolph.
Rudolph.
Joined in any reindeer games.
Reindeer games.
And one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say. Come on. Rudolph, with your nose so bright, won't you guide my sleigh tonight? Then how the reindeer loved him.
Loved him.
As they shouted out with glee. Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer.
Here.
It'll go down in history.
History.
(Laughter) I know my Christmas is almost.
Even my grandkids are clapping. They only come once a year, Ro.
And another thing that we have is always to thank our men and women in uniform, in the Navy, the Army, the Marines, the Coast Guard, the Air Force, and those men and women in the uniform that work day after day, no matter what holiday it is, the police, the firefighters, the fire police, the EMTs, who work endlessly for us in the borough and around the world. So could you just rise and sing with me "Let There Be Peace on Earth"? You might that be here. (Singing) Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. Let there be peace on earth, a peace that was meant to be. With goodnessful care, brothers all are weak. Let me walk with my brother in perfect harmony. Let peace begin with me, let this be the moment now. With every step I take, let this be my song sung now. To take each moment and live each moment in peace eternally. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. Let's hope all Bristolians are safe. (Applause) We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Merry Christmas, everyone.
All right, Mike, thank you very much for taking the time out to come here. We always appreciate it. And if you want to hear Rosemary, she's at St. Anne's Church every weekend singing. Before we get started, I'm going to open up public participation. So anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything on the agenda, please go up to the podium and state your name.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Somebody coming up, I just want to let you know that the parade will be on our TV starting hopefully this evening. So if you're trying to view the parade, it should be on tonight.
Good evening. Ken Beckslar, 300 Block of Cleveland Street. Couple things. Last week, I asked you, I asked the manager or anybody what was... First of all, the windfall you got from refinancing the rank, where's that money now?
It's in our capital improvement budget.
Okay, that's what I figured. Like, close to a million dollars roughly?
Uh huh.
Because last week, I asked about what was left in or is in the capital improvement fund, and you said a million or just over.
I don't have the figure.
No, I know, but last week you gave it to me, it was about a million or something. So, I'm just saying, so that's where that money went, right? So, the capital improvement fund has the money from the rank.
Right, from the refinancing.
Okay.
To be spent only on capital improvement.
Okay, right. Just wanted to, one other thing, touch on an article that was in the paper yesterday, taxpayers might see tax increase in Bristol. There was a few inaccuracies in that article that I think might not be important to some people, but I think it is important to some people, me included. It did say, you know, there is, I see on the agenda, you have a five mil increase for the capital or the general fund, but there's also 1.75 going to be allocated for the fire companies, correct?
Correct.
So it's 6.75, which is more than an $80 a year increase for the average taxpayer that said in the article. It even says in the article, 6.75 mils. And it also said 12 million dollar budget. Was, I guess that was a typo or...
I don't think it's a typo.
12 million dollar budget? We have a 12 million dollar budget?
I think the issue was how many, what's the total of all the municipal budgets, and it's, in fact, with the, if I have it here, the... All the tax millage budgets add up to 6 million, $62,225. The non-tax millage funds are an additional $7,229,588. So, in essence, all the budgets that council oversees is in 13,291,813 dollars.
Okay, so the non-tax millage, which is, and I don't want you to go into it deeply, but just real, what is that, the non-tax millage?
Non-tax millage funds are the sewer fund, the capital improvement, highway aid, state liquid fuels, the investment account.
Okay, gotcha.
Refuge and street cleaning fund.
Okay, thanks. Anyhow, in the article also just said that this five mil increase, or well, then 6.75 mils was going to, tax hike will cover the $616,571 deficit. But that really isn't the deficit, the deficit, I know, I'm not...
I didn't write the article.
I know, but I just want to...
Why don't you just tell me what you're trying to get at?
I just want to clarify, I understand you didn't, I didn't say you did.
I didn't write, you're talking about an article, why don't you just tell me what point you're trying to make?
My point is, I think people should be, they should be a little more accurate.
If they watch our meetings, they know exactly what we're doing.
Not everybody has cable?
You have the floor.
And they're not watching you now, then, if they don't have cable.
But some people are. But I'm here to ask you, I'll stand over here and ask you the questions.
That's fine, I mean, I don't know, you keep referring to an article, we didn't write the article.
All right, that's fine, I know you didn't write it. The last thing was, in the article, it said Councilman Tony Devine said he favored cutting all overtime, including police overtime and overtime for post-storm cleanup. Anyhow, I didn't hear him say exactly that, well, there was a caveat to that, was, except for emergencies, correct? That's what it says on the agenda, too.
Well, I think all overtime is considered a real...
Well, I don't know, not, well, it...
In your opinion.
I would hope, I would hope. But anyhow, the article didn't say that, didn't say except for emergencies.
Anna, will you please call in before you do your article next time and get it right?
Look at her face.
All right, then the last thing, but this part of the article I did like and I agreed with, Councilman Devine also argued that Bristol's budget should be based on the money the borough gets through taxes and other sources, instead of depending on investment returns.
Well, that, all right, that can never happen, because you would have to take that money, no matter who's sitting here, and raise taxes, because how do you replace that money in your general fund without the interest?
I guess...
We didn't start that, we're just filing.
No, I know you didn't, you're right.
We've been here, that's been the way it's been handled.
I didn't, you're right.
What I'm saying is, so how do you take out...
But it's...
Let me finish, I listen to you.
Go ahead.
How do you take out $600,000 a year and put that, where do you want to put it now, if you don't want to balance your budget with it?
I guess it's like, it's...
I'm asking you a question.
Where do I want to put it?
Where do you want to put it?
In a fund somewhere.
Okay, let's put it, you want to put it in capital improvements?
Somewhere.
For future rainy days or something?
Yes.
Okay, so let's do that.
All right, and then...
Now, how do you give me the $600,000 back to balance the general fund?
You make some cuts where you have to, if you're spending too much money.
Okay, you're right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
Was that Sabato 600 Block in New Buckley Street? I just wanted to go over the services that are needed in this town that we, as taxpayers, we're already paying for. Just seeing the brine trucks going down the street yesterday, this is what we pay for. And most towns are going to the system. There was an article in yesterday's paper that Upper Makefield's buying their brine from Rice Town. So this is what everybody's doing, everybody's laying down the brine before the storm. You can't put it down after the storm. And that's just, you know, that's one aspect of services. I've called the, my mom's had a couple sewer backups the last couple of years, and both times it happened during the weekend. So it's nice to be able to call that emergency number, they give you a call back within a half hour, they cruise out there within a half hour, they take care of the problem. It would be a shame to have to try to wait till Monday to get something like that corrected, when, and this is what our taxes pay for. It's not an increase in taxes. So, I know we need to increase revenues, and we've gone through the articles in the paper, Middletown, their budget's 400,000, $4 million in the red, because of their same thing that we're dealing with, just to return our interest on the money that we have invested. So, and one of their solutions that they're coming up with is earn income tax, which 95% of municipalities in Pennsylvania already have. I work in Newtown, 1% of my pay goes to Newtown. I think it's something that we should look here, because I'd rather have my 1% go to Bristol than Newtown. They're going to take a beating when Lockheed Martin shuts down, that's over 1,000 jobs shutting down, and they're well-paid jobs, so. Something that we should look, look at, along with the other thing that Councilman-elect Gerard brought up as far as the service tax. So, we're trying to, we're trying to take the load off the seniors, you know, and by us working, we're the ones that are going to have to do it, you know, we can't raise and expect the seniors... Well, I do have some things that I looked at, at my mom's combined taxes. She gets the homestead exclusion tax, she gets the property tax rebate, and when you combine them two, it knocks her bill down 26%. So I would like to see if there's a chance that we can help our seniors, that maybe they don't know about these things, that they're more than eligible for, and I think we should help them out, try to give them some relief, so. But the workers, you know, we're the ones that are working, if it's 1%, it shouldn't go to Newtown, it should stay in Bristol, you know, it's like, it's like going shopping here, shop in Bristol, stay in Bristol, so. And in fact, I, and there's, there's a fear in this town that Bristol's changing, and it's been changing through the years, you know, home building, I grew up on Lincoln Avenue as a little kid, them homes have fallen apart. It was home to us, we loved, I loved my upbringing on that street, that was home. But them homes are like the ones on Elm Street and Chestnut Street, somebody came in, wiped them out, also the homes on Pond Street there, that was, you know, that's one. Then you have the homes on Coolish, you have the River View, the homes that Ralph has built in Giuseppe Drive, and all over town, and I'm sure there's more houses coming. But these are, these are the things that are necessary to bring this town up. Anybody who has a rental property are benefiting from what this, how this town looks and how it's run. You won't be able to get the rent you're getting in a rundown town, you know, we just had a house rented out on our street for, I think it's $1,400 a month. Well, if your town's rundown, you think you're getting $1,400 a month? You're not getting that. So it all combines to bring this town where we're at, and we're going to go, you know, we're going to do better, so just, just keep on going, don't be afraid to be great, you know? Let's not just settle for being good. And other than that, that's all I have, just want to wish, I want to thank Mr. Dillon. I sent him a ton of emails trying to, you know, get stuff done. He just backed me right away, and we worked together and good things done, so. Thank you very much to everybody, Merry Christmas. Feliz Navidad, maybe, maybe Rose can sing that next year for us.
Right? We can start, we need you.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
That's Dave Gerard, Corshin Street. We touched on flex scheduling for the maintenance workers there a little bit last week, and I still think that's a viable idea. If, all we're asking with a flexible schedule is that we provide the workers with 40 hours in a six-day schedule instead of a five-day schedule, and you can see the advantages of that. You probably work six, seven days a week like I do, when it rains out or snows out, I got to work Saturdays and Sundays. So, just this week alone, if we had a six-day flex schedule, if, if, I don't really know what our work weeks are, but if we were paying guys overtime yesterday, Saturday could have been a regular day, to save us a little bit of money on overtime. And the worst-case scenario, cuts taxes, and all we're asking is our young men to work an occasional Saturday, so I think that's a good idea.
Well, their work schedule is Monday through Friday.
Right.
Anything over that is time and a half.
Well, with a flex schedule, which a lot of construction unions down in Philadelphia use, window washers and things like that, because they're, they're, they're caught in the weather all the time, sometimes they can't wash windows, their contract reads provide 40 hours in a six-day schedule instead of a five-day schedule. So, it's an occasional Saturday, you might have to work, save the borough a little bit of money. I think it's a good idea.
Dave, you ought to take a look at those guys, they're not so young anymore. (Laughter)
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
Evening, Bill Pezza, Pond Street. Three things, one, I always like the things that Jose has to say, and the reference he made to making sure the senior citizens are getting their property tax rebate, Representative Galloway's office, Senator Tomlinson's office, and I'm sure the senior senator across the street, all have the proper forms, and if, if indeed there's a senior citizen out there not filling out that information and making sure they're getting proper reimbursement, they should, they should look into that. So thank you, Jose, for reminding us of that. Secondly, I'd like to thank you in advance or encourage you to support item five, I'm happy to see it on the agenda for the facade program, we're going to work hard to try to make that work in the cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority. And third, last week, I mentioned the brick program for raising the bar to support ongoing, as you know, we don't ask the borough for any money for any of our activities, and there's a lot of enthusiasm for buying the bricks, but I forgot to say how you do it. So if you would, if you want a brick order form, you can send an email to raisingthebarbristol@gmail.com, it's raisingthebarbristol@gmail.com, and we'll email you an order form. You can also pick one up, the great ideas by Ann and Mignoni George, and the tax office. Thank you very much.
Joe Marie's has them all, so.
And Joe Marie, and Spicing Company, actually.
That's right, I got a, every place I shop, they gave me one.
So have a nice Christmas, everyone, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? All right, before we, that ends public participation, but before we get into our agenda, just a couple things. First of all, our reorganization meeting will be January 6th at 7:00 PM, will be the swearing-in of the mayor and council, and the reorganization of council. The other thing is, they're calling for an inch an hour tomorrow's snow, so if everybody would try to stay off the roads, it makes it a lot easier for our public works department to get out there and plow and let them do their job. And for everybody that was sitting home Sunday watching the Eagles go... And for everybody that was sitting home Sunday, watching the Eagles game and relaxing and having a good time, our guys, even though they were getting paid, had to be out on the street all day, plowing until 8, 9 o'clock at night, and they started early in the morning putting brine down. And that brine, that brine machine does work. I had the opportunity to follow it around town, and it stops automatic, it keeps track of gallons, it does everything it was supposed to do. And it was a great investment for this town. And the people that want to criticize these guys constantly by saying they don't know what they're doing, the streets are horrible, the plow's not on the ground, I'd like to put them in front of the plow one time and see if they like it. Because these guys do a great job for this town. They're leaving their families home, and they're out, and they're out there breaking their butt for us to make sure it's safe. You can go to the podium. Start criticizing them, know what they do, even though they're getting paid for it.
My name's Steve Boji, Public Works Department. I just want to clear a couple of things up. There's always like a lot of questions on what we do and how we do it. If you see, if you see a plow truck with its plow up while it's snowing, or any of our trucks with their plows up, there's a reason for that. It's not because we don't want to push the snow. It's because once you put salt down, you have to work it into the road. Why would you throw salt down on the road and push it away? I mean, it's common sense. Instead of like bashing us, stop us and ask us. We're not bad guys. I mean, just ask us, and we'll tell you what we're doing and why we're doing it. That's all.
Thank you.
Number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to the approval of the council minutes, November 11th and December 2nd. Approval of the budget work session minutes, November 14th, 18th, and 25th. Except the Treasury's report for October 2013. Except the police and DJ's report for November 2013. Except the fire chief's report for November 2013. Except the inspection department report for November 2013. Except the public works department report for 2013. Except the Harvard Report and Decisions 1125.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the vector control ordinance.
Second. Second by Ms. Cullen. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Now, this is just to, we're going to advertise for an ordinance, not pass an ordinance, right? Because I just thought maybe I missed out on going over this a little more.
We're going to advertise that we're going to discuss it in January and see if there's some things we need to change or not.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number five on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the approval of the facade improvement program cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority.
I have a second by Mrs. Trinell. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number six.
Number six. Now, I know this statement scares a lot of people, and this is how serious the situation is this year, next year, and the following year. And there's a reason for it. The motion is to cut all overtime except for emergencies only.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-uniform contract for 2013 through 2017.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments? Mr. Devine.
Yes. With this motion, I'm willing to show my ability to work with council. The only thing I would ask you is, actually, I have a question for Mr. Dillon. I know it was brought up already by Mr. Gerard, but, Mr. Dillon, what is our pay week? When are our borough workers allowed to work? Are they allowed? I mean, when is their pay week? They're 40 hours. Can they get it in?
We schedule the work week, Monday through Friday, for public works. The pay period is Sunday night at midnight through, you know, through seven days. That's the pay period.
Okay, so another question is, is a flex schedule a possibility? Is that a union issue, or is it something that we could do as a borough?
I don't think we could change anybody's schedule. Nor would we want to change anybody's schedule.
Well, I think, the reason I'm saying is this, I mean, I'm willing to work with the rest of council, and I think that the borough workers do a great job. But there is some give and take. So if they're, I mean, if we're willing to accept, you know, the negotiation, the contract that was brought up, I think that, you know, having a flex schedule will save the taxpayers' money in the long run, so...
Mr. President, isn't the motion, Tony, I don't think that you can amend this motion or amend the contract.
These are, these are not amending. These are, has nothing to do with the contract. These, this is a question on...
The motion is to approve the non-uniform contract. That's what the motion is.
Right, and Mrs. DeJesepey, the president, said, "Are there any comments or questions?" I'm making a question.
Asking for modifications.
I'm not asking for modifications. If it's not a, if it's not a contractual issue, it's not a modification at all. I'm trying to figure out, is it something that we could do as a council? That's what I'm going to...
No. And I'm, the union's sitting right here. Tony, you want...
It's a contractual issue. The issue is, has been negotiated for years for Monday through Friday, and that's the way the contract is.
Okay, so it's Monday through Friday?
Yes. Red or yellow is the word.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a motion and a second. Give me a roll call vote. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. I just want to highlight again the significance of the two-tier aspect of this contract and the ultimate savings that it'll bring to this borough. Something that, when we were negotiating, we negotiated with the understanding that this would save us money far beyond the majority of us sitting here. And I think it's a great contract. I think our borough workers do a great job, and I think, you know, we walked out of that room feeling really good about fairness to our borough workers who deserve it, and also taking care of this borough in the future. And I think it's a great contract.
Roll call vote. Mr. Devine.
Before I vote, I also would like to say that I think that this contract, the negotiation of this contract was a fair contract, because I think that you have two sides that weren't very happy, and I think that's a good negotiation. When you have two sides that aren't very happy, and I agree with Mr. Pezza, that when you have the two-tier system, you know, that's something that I can go along with, that I think the longevity of the financial stability of the borough is going to be helped by that two-tier system. But the other thing, I will tell you this, and there are some of my friends out there, and I think they do a great job. But I think in the future, if things change, and if I'm on that, just to give you a heads-up, if I'm on that, you know, when that contract comes back up, and I'm on that negotiating team, I will be trying to talk about a flex schedule. So when that comes up, just so nobody's surprised, in four or five years when it comes up, there will be a flex schedule that I will be pushing. So, the answer to is, yes, I will agree with the contract.
Mr. Sabatini.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Cullen.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Trinell.
Yes.
Mr. Plensky.
Yes.
Mr. DeJesepey.
Yes.
Motion carries. I don't know what the difference is between the two contracts. I guess I'm missing something.
Don't ask. Yeah, let's keep going.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2014 budgets.
Second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? Roll call vote. Mr. Devine.
No.
Mr. Sabatini.
Yes.
Mr. Pezza.
Yes.
Ms. Cullen.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Trinell.
Yes.
Mr. Plensky.
Yes.
Mr. DeJesepey.
Yes.
Motion carries. I don't know what the difference is between the two contracts. I guess I'm missing something.
Don't ask. Yeah, let's keep going.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2014 budgets.
Second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? Roll call vote. Mr. Devine.
An emphatic no.
Mr. Sabatini.
No.
Mr. Pezza.
Yes.
Ms. Cullen.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Plensky.
Yes.
Mr. DeJesepey.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 10.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance establishing tax rates for the 2014 fiscal year.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? Roll call vote.
I got a question. This is basically just asking us if we support the tax increase. Am I correct?
This is an ordinance to implement the tax rates for the 2014 fiscal year.
Right. I just don't want to go against what I'm saying about not raising, I mean, raising taxes and voting yes on this. I'm asking, is this ordinance going to establish that I am agreeing for a tax raise and then I'm voting against a tax rate? That's the question I'm asking.
Mr. Devine.
I'm waiting for an answer.
Yes.
This is the tax rates as proposed based on the advertisement for an increase of five mils within the general fund.
Okay, that's all I was...
An increase within the fire department.
The answer is no.
Mr. Sabatini.
No.
Mr. Pezza.
Yes.
Ms. Cullen.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Trinell.
Yes.
Mr. Plensky.
Yes.
Mr. DeJesepey.
Yes.